Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is time to begin tonight's Huntington City Council meeting for December 27th, 2021. Tonight, the invocation will be led by Reverend Michael Rexro from Central Methodist Church, and Councilman Teresa Johnson will lead us in the pledge. Please rise.
Let us pray. Holy God, as we are in the midst of the Christmas season, we celebrate that you are Emmanuel, God, with us. And we pray, dear Lord, that you would be with this council tonight and with all of us, and that the decisions that are made tonight would be decisions that are pleasing to you. We pray for your guidance and for your wisdom upon each decision that is made, and that you would fill us with your spirit, that we may be instruments of your blessing, so that we may share your blessings one with another and to this entire city and region. Guide us and direct us, and let everything be done according to your will, and it's in the holy name of Jesus we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, liberty, and justice for all.
Ms. Atkins, can you please call the roll?
Ms. Anderson?
Present.
Present.
Here.
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
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 Present.
And we do have a quorum. Item number three is the synopsis of the last meeting.
Move to adopt.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Mount and a second by Councilman Bailey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the synopsis is approved. Item number four is reports of the mayor. Mayor Williams, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman members. Just a couple of items. The city hall will be closed on Friday, December 31st, in observance of the New Year holiday, and household garbage is on a regular schedule this week. City employees will be participating in their quarterly day of service at the Facing Hunger Food Bank on Thursday, January 13th, and city council members are welcome to participate. Once again, this is on Thursday, January 13th. You're invited to participate in a two-hour volunteer shift stuffing food boxes at the food bank. The available shifts at the food bank on January 13th are 9:00 to 11:00 a.m., 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m., 1:00 to 3:00 p.m., 3:00 to 5:00 p.m., and 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. If you didn't get this, there's a magic number to call here at this of calling Brian Chambers in the mayor's office. It's the same number that he'll be able to tell you about trick or treat for next year. Oh, and one other thing, the Cincinnati Bengals are in first place in their division, and they have worn out the Steelers twice, and they beat the Ravens. Go Bengals.
Thank you.
Cut it out.
Item number five is a resolution 2021-R-81. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to furnish labor and materials for asbestos testing services.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Jones, a second by Councilman Johnson. Good evening.
Good evening, Dan Underwood, purchasing director for the city of Huntington, 805th Avenue. What you have before you is a resolution to provide asbestos testing to the city of Huntington. This combined with the next resolution, which is for asbestos abatement, is in support of the city's unsafe and dilapidated housing demolition project. Currently, there are 84 houses on that list, 57 of them ready to be torn down, 27 still in different phases of the process. The asbestos testing phase was put out to bid on September 30th. We received four bids for this project. The lowest responsible bidder was A-Star Abatement out of Charleston. They will be performing this work at a rate of $27.50 per hour and at $8 per test. Funding for this project is from the general capital projects line of the city of Huntington General Fund, as well as from the Community Development Block Grant or CDBG funds. The two projects combined, the two resolutions, excuse me, combined for the abatement and the testing, this and the next one, combined will not exceed, shall not exceed, $1 million, and I will answer your questions at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Underwood, just for a clarification, in the first part of the memo here, you mentioned that a previous entity that had done this kind of work wasn't picked partially due to them being unable to perform it in a timely manner. For those of us that, I have no idea about timely manner for asbestos. What does a timely manner look like for that kind of testing? What's the typical turnaround?
They had actually, that company was asked by the Finance Department and by Development and Planning to begin the work, and several months went by. They had to contact them again to say, hey, what's going on? They even had to bring them in for a meeting. Once that meeting would have occurred, they end up subcontracting the work out to a different company.
Any other questions for Dan?
I've got a question, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir.
I don't know whether you can answer this or not, but I would like to get ahold of the list of the addresses of the buildings that are currently being considered for demolition. Is that list available? Is there such a list, and is it available?
Crystal Perry should have that list, should she not? Crystal Perry in Development and Planning.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the resolution is approved.
Mike, I couldn't hear one other person. Will you roll call it? Oh, I didn't, I didn't hear one of them.
Councilman Anderson?
Get on and come through.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Okay. Item number six is a resolution 2021-R-83. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract to furnish labor and materials for asbestos abatement services.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Jackson, a second by Vice Chair Mount. All right, Dan Underwood, welcome back.
Dan Underwood, purchasing director for the city of Huntington, 805th Avenue. What you have before you is a resolution to provide asbestos abatement services to the city of Huntington. This was put out to bid on October 13th. We received two bids. The low bidder was, once again, A-Star Abatement of Charleston, West Virginia. As I previously stated, it will be combined $1 million, up to $1 million, out of CDBG funds and the general fund budget for the project. I will answer any questions you have at this time.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
Just one quick question, something I noticed on this page, the bidders, there's a really substantial difference in the amount of money for A-Star versus reclaim. Can you help us understand that? I mean, it's over a hundred grand.
Matter of fact, when I opened up the bid, that actually was a question I had immediately upon seeing that. What happened was, A-Star Abatement, this is scenario-based bid. Normally, what happens with an abatement bid that goes out, you have a very specific house or building that you have the company come in, tell us how much will you charge us to do asbestos abatement on this house? We don't have that here. We have a bunch of different houses. So what I did was, I reviewed eight different bids that had been put out by different agencies across the country. Almost every single one of them was based on an individual building. So what I did was, I found one that did what's called scenario-based, and it actually happened to be the state of West Virginia. So what this was, is this was a scenario where we put out there, if you had a building that had this type of asbestos in it, how much would you charge us to remove that asbestos? Well, to be sure, we covered all of our bases. We also had commercial buildings as part of that abatement bid. There was three different scenarios. A-Star Abatement, underbid on the commercial construction, because where they have done this type of work in the past, they know majority of it will end up being residential, and they even admitted to me, because I had major concerns when I saw that, and I called them to make sure, said, hey, is your bid right, before I even go to council on this? They said yes, and they admitted that's what they did, just so they would win it, the bid. So if there's a commercial property, they understand they're going to take a hit.
Okay, thank you. So we've, second question.
Yes, ma'am.
So just to be clear, we've made sure that we're not at any risk for having like a balance due that's over the top when this is all said and done.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions for Dan Underwood? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number seven is a resolution 2021-R-87. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council authorizing the mayor to enter into a contract for a project in an amount not to exceed $444,950 for the maintenance and repair of the Paul Ambrose Trail for Health.
Move for the adoption.
I have a motion by Councilman Bowen, a second by Councilman Sweeney. Mayor Williams, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman members. The Paul Ambrose Trail for Health was constructed, authorized for construction in 2009, came before city council and received general fund funding, as well as Community Development Block Grant funding, as well as funding from, from the state. It has been a game changer as it relates to health and encouraging individuals to be out. The problem is, is that as active and as enthusiastic as several different entities were on the development of the path, I learned a long time ago, if you can't afford to take care of something, you can't afford it. Well, it wasn't that we couldn't afford to take care of it, nobody was stepping up and, and participating. There were a lot of fundraisers over in Ritter Park and, and others to raise money for the ongoing maintenance, but nobody ever stepped forward with, interaction with some of the members on council here. They agreed with me that we needed to step up. And this is, in essence, what we're doing is that if you spend any time on the levee through Harvey Town, through Westmoreland, along the levee and on into Guindot, you will see that the, as nice as the facility was when it was constructed, it has not been maintained, period. And we need to go undertake a restoration project, and this is the first phase of, of doing this. $200,000 is going to be used from the city's general fund and to assist in this. We expect $60,000-plus dollars from the City of Huntington Foundation. $80,000 been pledged from the Appalachian Transportation Institute. Senator Bob Plomel has been an avid advocate of the Paul Ambrose Trail for Health, and he stepped forward very aggressively here, as well as not, up to $104,000 from the state of West Virginia. And again, this is something that Senator Plomel has been driving for, for us. This is a restoration of the project that cost two and a half, in excess of two and a half million dollars to construct to begin with, and this is a phase one of our restoration. We'll be coming back, I would expect, with Rescue Plan money, if it will qualify, and proceed forward from, from there. That's the detail. If you need some specific detail, Michelle is here to be able to answer, but other than that, what we're doing is stepping up and providing the leadership that should have been provided among all the entities for a number of years, and we're taking ownership of, of the issue and getting it done, and with your approval, we'll begin that process.
Thank you. Any questions for Mayor Williams? Any comments?
Just a quick comment, Mr. Mayor. Just want to, from everyone down in District One and the other districts affected with the Paul Ambrose Trail, I want to thank you for spearheading this and hearing the concerns of the constituents here in the city.
Well, this congratulations also goes to, to you and Councilman Anderson on both bookends of this, but this is affecting all of your, so congratulations will go all around, if you vote right on this.
Any other questions for Mayor Williams? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? The resolution is approved. Item number eight is a resolution 2021-R-88. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council approving expenditures of American Rescue Plan Act of 2021, ARPA funds, including approval of expenditures of funds for individual council member projects complying with ARPA spending requirements, approval of expenditures for a grant to the Cabell County Community Services Organization Incorporated for the construction of a senior center in the West End that will be equipped to respond to COVID-19 testing and treatment issues in compliance with ARPA, and approving ARPA-compliant administrative expenditures.
With much pleasure that I endorse this for passage by city council, please.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Bailey, a second by Vice Chair Mount. Mayor Williams, welcome back.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman members. This is a resolution authorizing the expenditure of Rescue Plan money for three specific projects. First and foremost is the plan for each of the members of council to have $100,000 to work with individuals within your district and/or the community, or partner with one another to identify qualified Rescue Plan projects and be able to appropriate that money accordingly. Secondly, this is authorizing funding for the construction of a senior center in, in the West End. As indicated in the work session, there is, was a senior center that was working in the, what is now known the, the Wild Ramp. And when I became mayor, it was my intention to get a higher and best use out of that facility and gave CISO a one-year's notice to relocate their activity there. Frankly, they have continued their services, but they had been had a senior center, and that's something that I've recognized needs, has needed to be done, and this will assure that the, there will be a senior center that will be equipped to respond to COVID-19 testing and treatment issues, once again, in compliance with the Rescue Plan appropriations. And lastly, is to also fund our administrative support to make sure that every penny that we spend is spent appropriately. I'll be glad to answer any questions that you might have on this.
Any questions of council for Mayor Williams?
Have a comment, please?
Yes, sir.
I would like to thank the mayor for his wisdom and his insight, and I know the people of West End and Westmoreland will be really proud of what we're doing tonight, and I want to thank our CEO, Charles Holly, who's in the back. Thank you, Ms. Holly, for being here.
Welcome back.
So thank, thank you very much.
Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number nine is a resolution 2021-R-89. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council confirming the reappointment of Daniel J. Conrad to the Cavell Huntington Board of Health.
Move for the adoption.
Second.
I have a motion by Vice Chair Mount, and a second by Councilman Johnson.
Sorry, caught me on a page turn.
That's okay. Vice Chair Mount, you want to speak to this?
Yeah, Personnel Committee met on this and moved to forward to full council with a favorable recommendation.
Any questions of council? Anyone from the public on the appointment? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number 10 is a resolution 2021-R-92. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution for budget revision number two of the fiscal year 2021, 2022 general fund budget.
Move to adopt.
Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Jackson, a second by Vice Chair Mount. Scott Arthur, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of council. Scott Arthur, Budget Manager for the city of Huntington. What you have before you is the second general fund budget revision for your approval. Starting with the revenue side, federal grant revenue is increased by $4,872,375, of which $4,627,430 will be attributed to the shuttered venue operations grant for the Mountain Health Arena, and $244,945 will go towards the public assistance grant, also known as our ice storm reimbursement, sorry FEMA public assistance grant. On the expenditure side, we are increasing federal grant expenditures by the same appropriations as the revenue above to allow for the spending of those grant dollars for SVOG and FEMA public assistance. The other grants line is increased by $266,000. $200,000 of this is amount to a clerical error posted during the original budgeting process. $50,000 amounts to a private donation made for the SHON program, and $16,000 will be appropriated to our remaining grants to fulfill their obligations. As previously mentioned, we are moving $200,000 from the zoning board line to the other grants line to accurately document the originally approved funding by this council. The contingency account has been decreased by $266,000, of which $200,000 will be moved to capital projects to fund the maintenance of the PATH project. $66,000 will go to other grants to account for the private donation to SHON, as well as other grant obligations. And finally, $200,000 will go to the capital projects line for the maintenance of the PATH project, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Arthur? All right, anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item 11 is a resolution 2021-R-93. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council confirming the reappointment, reappointment of Randall T. Moore to the tri-state authority board.
Move for the adoption. Second.
I have a motion by Councilman Bowen, a second by Councilman Bailey. Mr. Bowen, would you like to speak on this resolution?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Personnel Committee did not meet on this resolution, however, under the guidance of Councilman Bailey. This is a reappointment. We trust that Randall Moore, spending as long as he has on that board with Councilman Bailey, will do a fine job.
All right. Any questions? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number 12 is a resolution 2021-R-94. Ms. Atkins.
A resolution of council confirming the reappointment of Jennifer Wheeler to the tri-state transit authority board.
Move for the adoption. Second.
Motion by Councilman Bowen, and a second by Vice Chair Mount.
Mr. Chair, this resolution also did not go before the Personnel Committee, however, we do, I do feel that Ms. Wheeler will be a fine reappointment, and again, under the guidance of Councilman Bailey, move for full adoption of that.
All right. Any questions on the reappointment? Anyone from the public? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And the resolution is approved. Item number 13 is good and welfare, and we have one, one gentleman who has signed up. Mr. Mark Bates.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members. I'm going to put my YMCA board president hat on tonight, and I'm here on behalf of our board to thank you. As you know, the, the Western Kentucky area was devastated by tornadoes, and the Huntington YMCA did a tornado relief effort for one week, December 13th to December 20th. We conducted a fundraiser, and thanks to you and your individual gifts of council totaling $2,000, we were able to, with individual gifts of the YMCA membership and the community, raise another $8,260 for a total of $10,260. Also, we filled a box truck with over $3,000 in supplies, and that was delivered over to the folks in Western Kentucky last Thursday. So thanks again for all that you, you did, and it's one great thing about living in this community, that we tend to come together for our friends in need. So thank you, and have a happy new year.
Well done.
Thanks, Mark. All right, I will start around to my left, Councilman Sweeney. To you.
Yes, I'd like to let everybody know that baseball is just around the corner. Little League signups start January the 1st online for Huntington Little League. Just go to their Facebook site, the group site, Huntington Little League, and sign up there. We had over 400 people participate last year between our 31 teams and all the volunteers, coaches, and other empires, field crew that worked. It was up, upwards of about 450 people involved. So it is a, there's a lot of people in the community involved in this. So sign your kids up, and let's play ball.
Ms. Johnson?
I, just a short something from me in District One, although I'm happy to see Scott Dameron here, I was kind of hoping Erica would be here tonight. Couple weeks ago, I was privileged enough to join Erica Hernandez and Joey Black at a court hearing related to one of the houses that was on Project Bane for Westmoreland. The individual that the house had was in deplorable conditions and continued to try to fight the city tooth and nail to, to keep that house, but wasn't making progress. So being able to see that firsthand, to see the efforts that they put forward a year in and out of a courtroom, and they were finally successful a couple weeks ago, and that house will be coming down shortly after the first of the year. So the community thanks both of them for their efforts, and we're looking forward to continuing a better year for next year.
Absolutely.
I just hope everyone has a safe and happy new year.
Yeah, I just, I want to thank Todd Sweeney for all the work, Councilman Sweeney, that he's doing in the West End on tearing down some bad houses that we need tore down. So Todd, thank you for all your hard work.
Councilman Anderson?
Uh, no comments, thank you.
Councilman Jackson?
I, yes, I just would like to kind of piggyback off of what Mark said, it's, it's a blessing to be able to work for an organization that in a time of need walks the walk and steps up and, and looks out for others. I had a conflict in interest as far as using my money to support this cause, and I just want to say I appreciate all the council members that kind of stepped in there and covered it, covered that for me. It's good to be able to, you know, combine being selfless, selfish, you know, it, it makes you feel good when you can do good for others. So I really appreciate you guys looking out for me, and happy holiday.
Thank you. And I'll wrap up by saying, all indications lead for our meeting in January. This will be the last full meeting that I chair. Look forward to whoever steps up to take this spot and Vice Chair. Hope that somewhere along the way, I hope with some leadership, help get you acclimated to being on city council. As always, I will always be of always be available. So with that, I have a motion to adjourn.
So move.
So move.